Elections and removal are pages forty-seven to fifty-one. And general provisions are sixty-five to sixty-six.
And this is?
From the Georgia Municipal Association Model Church. We're using that as a template to form discussions because we can go through, get the points that we need decisions on and go from there. So Sheffy, we are looking for the capital budget date. And I'm going to have to return my phone because I had a response from Tim Schorer to share with you guys.
Was it March thirty-first?
It is March thirty-first and he, well, so when we get everybody all together, we'll catch up with this really quick.
You gave me fifty-three to sixty-two, that's not going to fall in his own here.
Fifty-three to sixty-two is, some of these actually have page references, but fifty-
So six point two nine B, is that the section?
Uh, yes. Capital budget dates. All right, as it relates to Augusta, I'll try to paraphrase this. Here we go.
The page numbers aren't matching.
I'm sorry?
The page numbers you gave aren't matching.
Are they the page, did you give her the page numbers that are actually on the page or did you give her the page?
No, this is a section, the whole finance section that are on these pages, the whole-
Yeah, but did you give them the page, because like if there's like I, double I, like the one-two, then did you give them?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I did not.
So we're looking for section six two nine.
We're looking for capital budget date. So I'm going to paraphrase a very long series of conversations. And just, this will be mostly for information for you guys. Mr. Plunkett this morning referenced the fact that the year is roughly divided into two halves. The first six months is taking the prior year's fiscal performance and preparing the state audit. And so all hands on deck, working with the audit to get it filed by June thirtieth. The second half of the year, they immediately go to budget preparation and so forth. And he is quite fine with the notion of going September, November. That timeframe works, it aligns with what they're accustomed to doing and we dispatched with that this morning. Capital budgets form a different beast entirely. That is where individual departments make their requests for capital improvements. They've got twelve months to get the job done in. Those requests are due to the manager, but let me put that down. We need to do with that today too.
You heard me?
We need to harmonize a couple of terms. All right, so-
So just to bring everybody along, six point two nine B is on page one hundred and thirty-three.
Page one hundred and thirty-three.
Oh, yes.
And I'm going to check the other ones though.
Thank you. That's totally off. Hey Coach?
I'm sorry, what page is it?
One hundred and thirty-three.
This is on, uh, Administrative Affairs three eleven. I believe it starts, P starts on ninety-one.
Page ninety-one. Okay. So these pages have given everybody are worthless.
Yes. I'll wait for that.
All right. Page ninety-one for Administrative Affairs.
Uh, I'm looking at the others, if you want to start, I can let you know when to start.
All right, very good. So back to Mr. Schorer, he says the, in December, as soon as the budget is approved, the departments are to be providing feedback to the manager, currently the administrator, on what capital projects they are proposing. And there is a dance, a debate that goes back and forth and pushes back and forth. And she spends currently most of the month of January massaging those numbers, working with department heads and bartering back and forth on fifteenth or whatever is the closest meeting, so that it's done in the first quarter of the year. He said to drag it up, that it is just a fact of life, that if, if the commissioner is given, you know, a date, they're probably going to jump it anyway, but that's just the way it works. That we have no control over. Best we can do is to suggest it be completed by the end of the first quarter kind of thing. So let's look at page one thirty-three. And see if that lines with what this group thinks. If we have consensus on this.
So this language says on or before the date, but no later than however many days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. If you're saying March fifteenth, this is very important.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
It is, you're twenty-five percent into your fiscal year before you do that according to the way it's done now. So the problem, the problem with changing that is to change it in a moment back, you would be into the middle of the budget preparation. In other words, they are all hands on deck right now, working out, proposing next fiscal year's budget, not adopted yet, and they're dealing with SPOS this particular year. So-
So we're going to have to make this slot in the years, the ninth and eleventh March of the operating date, the fiscal year. Because if we do it as a quarter, assuming that doesn't change, we're still on the calendar year.
Right. What is, what is our current process?
Current process is the manager starts accumulating things in December and they go into the fiscal year.
They go into the fiscal year without having to finalize the budget.
Yep, that's right. And you've only got twelve months to spend that money, or truly we only have nine months to spend that money.
So in more common, in best practice, is to have the capital budget completed before the beginning of the fiscal year. So you've got that entire fiscal year to actually accomplish, to cap five of them. And it's not uncommon for capital budgets to run parallel to an operating budget in terms of timing. And so it would not be unreasonable, although it would be a dramatic shift in practice, to have them preparing the capital budget at the same time as the operating budget. It may be worth having some more conversation around that, I don't know. But in terms of best practice, having it done before the fiscal year is best practice.
Now Chair, can you get with Mr. Schorer, Schorer?
Sure.
Can you get with him and find out if that works for finance?
Okay. Would you all entertain a conference call, because I don't know if he's there.
Well, I'm not sure that he's-
Yeah. Okay. Never mind. You guys remember, we're not setting this up for-
This year.
No, for, for the current government, because this is the new government that's coming in place. If we're going to keep doing things the same way we've always done it, we're going to stay where we are.
Yep.
No, but hearing from somebody who's currently in the position doing the job, he might say, you know what, this is how it is working right now, but I think this might work better. So having that input from somebody-
He's open to it too. So to that point, how would you recommend to this body, you would phase in this kind of thing? We're clearly, at the earliest, you'll be talking twenty-twenty-six, if not twenty-twenty-seven. How do we word that? Is there a phase in process from where we are now to where we want to go?
If I'm understanding you correctly, and I may not be, because I've been known to something like that.
No worries.
Oh. It would, it's not a matter of phasing it in, because you would go from when the charter is voted in.
Right.
So I don't, maybe I don't understand.
Well, clearly, clearly, it doesn't matter which voting cycle it gets handled on. We're going to talk later in this about when the charter should take effect.
But it's not something we decide, Marissa.
That's the legislature will determine that.
Okay, well, no problem, we'll get to that. Either way though, if we, you can't-
Well, it'll determine in the sense that when it goes to vote, then it'll have an effective date in the charter that they put in.
Okay, so they'll fill that in for us. Very good.
My question is, is there benefit to changing it to? So what, can we talk about what the benefits are to changing it to March fifteenth? Like what are we discussing right now? Because if-
So March fifteenth is essentially the current practice.
Okay.
If you changed it to December thirty-first, would mirror the actual suggested best practices.
That's why I had asked if that was our current practice, and I thought our current practice was September twenty-eleventh. So that, that's the confusion I was-
No, yeah.
Because of the document that we've created, the motions that we passed, you suggested being the ninth and the eleventh month of operating the fiscal year, we're going to have to say first quarter instead of March fifteen, fifteen days prior to the end of the first quarter.
Or you could say, by the end of the fourth quarter, so that both documents are in place for the whole fiscal year.
You're saying the same thing, but you're addressing, I'm addressing the beginning, you're addressing the end.
Yep.
My confusion was here, it says March fifteenth, so I thought we were trying to change it to March fifteenth. So I wasn't sure of the purpose of doing that.
That was just a springboard to get discussion going on this. So if it's here, just know this is just a jumping off point.
Now Chair, Mr. Plunkett, do you know that definitively that the capital budget has to be expended within the same fiscal year?
I believe that is what Mr. Schorer said.
The reason I'm saying, you could have capital projects that would take a multiple years to be funded for. I'm not, I actually sent him a text while we were asking this, to see if you can answer it, I'm a little stupid. But the reason I'm saying is, is that if you're trying to get the funds spent from the same fiscal year, that's one issue. But if it was a road project or something like that, or bidding issues, it may follow from one fiscal year to the next.
So it may be helpful to articulate, there are two separate processes that should be going on. Process one is a capital improvement plan, which would show what your proposed capital projects are for the next several years. Capital budget is how much of that capital you're funding in any given fiscal year.
Agreed, that's how much is funded, but how much is supposed to be expended in the same fiscal year is the question. Because, you know, if, I don't know, we just happened to have a hurricane recently. That would delay force majeure, you couldn't do it. But you would still have the same capital funds allocated for that item. And so I think that's the question, is that, you know, part of the issue, a thing that you're looking at is you're setting up a budget which has capital funds in it. And you will not know that final number until November, correct? Based on this. So then the question is, how quickly are you expecting this organization to create a capital funds budget based on a budget that was formed November, sometime November, called November fifteenth? So I think that's the question. I don't know, but I think it would be worth us trying to figure out, is do capital funds have to be expended in the same fiscal year that they are allocated for? That may make a little bit difference because, you know, it's essentially going to carry over to the following calendar year, so to speak. And I don't know that answer, but before you all overanalyze it, I think that would be a question that you need to be aware of, is how long do you have to spend them?
Okay. So Dr. Facer, can I ask a series of questions to make sure I'm understanding this properly? You say best practices would be for both processes, capital and operating budget, A and O, to be occurring on parallel tracks in the same timeframe?
Yes.
So that would, that would require for our government, a retooling of their thought process to make those aligned?
Yes.
Because if they're waiting until March to approve that budget, then you can't spend until that is approved, which is less time you have to spend.
All right. So in order to capture everybody's questions, I've got, let's make sure I've got them. So, and if you have more, by all means, just pick up the phone or better, put it in the text so I get it straight. The first question was, are capital budgets currently formatted always spent in a fiscal year? Or are they allocated over many years? How much has to be funded versus expended each fiscal year? And do capital funds have to be spent in the same calendar year? Should I put this in a email to you guys for future questions? What I suspect what we're going to need to do now is reach out to Mr. Schorer and have him, who would you recommend we survey about the doability of this and timeframe?
Is it from a legal issue? When I say legal, I'm not talking to lawyers, but what I'm saying is, from a procedural issue or from a practical issue?
Practical more than legal.
The reason I say, I think you could talk to Mr. Schrayer, but if anyone knows anyone that's at Columbia County, you can also ask them how they handle their capital budget.
Okay.
You're going to get from Tim, you're going to get what our current policies are. And he'll tell you how that works, if it doesn't work. But if you're trying to see if there's some other way to do it, the institute would have some resources. But if other governments may handle that issue.
So another, to that point, since we are consolidated government as opposed to a freestanding county, is it possible to ask our friends in Athens to maybe pull this week, Columbia May in Athens, and see what their practice is, what their calendar, just get a sense of it? And if they would be kind enough to share their entire budget cycle calendar with us, we ought to be able to adapt that to our situation. And then if it's okay with this body, rather than bring this to the big meeting, is everybody okay with putting this on the work session for next week? Because I don't know that we're anywhere close to being ready to resolve this until we do the one we're come. Okay, so we'll put this back on work session in twentieth. All right, very good. Okay, I'm going to kick it back to Dr. Facer to discuss the audit function language.
Macy, you want to add?
Just for this follow-up, Mr. Schrayer responded that capital budget has to be spent from the same fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Spent-
You said the twentieth?
Uh, next week, we'll get to meet again on the twentieth.
It'll be a long text.
I don't know, we'll find out. We rotate like- We rotate every other week, but when we look at the calendar, it's Christmas and Thanksgiving.
Done with all the stuff. I will, I'll get some feedback. But it's going to be capital budget for all of us. That is all right.
We'll try to run these two meetings right after each other.
So yes, you're right. But essentially, if they push it forward, the capital projects can't happen.
Say, sorry Sheffy, I couldn't hear you enough. What did you say again?
Um, we were talking about this commission having the power to push it forward if they don't like it. And like, yes, they do, that's essentially a governance issue.
Recently with Parks and Recreation.
Yep. And it's a mess. But I don't think you can eliminate that language just because they are still a body. They can technically not agree. And then that means capital projects stall until they get rid of pressure.
So can I ask a question, Ms. Rell? Is all of this charter related that we're discussing right now? Or do we just need to figure out when the capital budget is due? And the other stuff is just information to help us make that decision?
I would say it's a determination and a decision.
Is there a format that currently in our charter?
A form of?
The current requirement is-
Let me look it up. This is the charter, which has all the certain decisions that's seen. I'm sorry, I was just asking, how are people so few of them? If you'll give me a second to look, I will-
Since we're ready for the rest of the year, we've got two weeks left.
Okay.
I want to know whether or not we include all of that.
Yeah, it's next week.
Sure, next week. Ken, so Augusta's for your benefit, because I was just talking to Eric about this. We typically do meet every other week. We discovered after we set that pattern, that our November meeting meets on Thanksgiving. And our December second meeting was scheduled to be on Christmas Day. So what we took a vote about three months ago to move it to two meetings back to back. Today and the next week. And skip till December fourth, and then there'll be a meeting December eighteenth. Okay? And then I think, I think the next one after that is the same problem with New Year's Day, actually. So we voted to resume the every other week schedule since January eighth.
Turkey wings.
Okay.
So you all should have just received a handout memo titled Internal Auditor Issues to Clarify and Resolve. But you'll recall that several weeks ago, from finance, there was a proposed internal audit department for Augusta. That document is pages four, five, and six of this handout. And so what we've done is we have gone through that and matched it with charter language. But we have a few issues that we need to address that either weren't in this set of language or where this language did not, was strikingly different from some best practices that are suggested. And we're fine of doing it differently, I just want to make sure that you're aware of those differences. And so if we'll go back to page two. So where I mention item B, that's referring back to item B under the proposal that was approved by the committee. So item B creates an internal audit department. The core issue is, are you envisioning this to be an employee or a firm? Most organizations have this as an employee. But the language that you have in element E makes that confusing because it suggests that procurement will provide three qualified independent auditors. And so if it's an individual, that should likely be HR as opposed to procurement. And so we just need to make sure we understand, are you intending it to be an individual, which is the common practice? Or a firm, which is not common for a standalone internal auditor? It's more common for an internal auditor if they need a specialized person to hire a firm for that specialized independent auditor.
I think from my understanding, it is going to be an individual. But, and I think, I know I personally get the HR. Not sure if it's considered procurement or talent bank or whatever we call it, and procurement kind of interchange. So I think it would be procurement through HR. An individual, that was my understanding.
Generally, when you have a department head or a, somebody, I'm going to say department head, they put out a request for qualifications and, or they use an outside firm vet. When the bill, the order goes out, it is determined what the qualifications will be and what the job description will be, so that when people apply for that job, they know what they're walking into. They know, you know, you're not going to be cleaning toilets and cleaning up. Okay. I think that for someone like this, it's almost like the city manager requirements, this person is going to have to have professional requirements, professional background. And I think it's spit out in here.
And we lay that out under I C five, yeah.
So what's confusing to me is E reads like, it doesn't read like an internal audit at all. It reads like the annual audit. So it's confusing, because the three qualified independent auditors, that makes sense for an annual audit. But then it says for the internal audit department. That doesn't make sense for an annual.
Well, you have two different things. You have a state required audit for every year, okay?
Done by an external-
Done by an external now.
Right.
This backups, when we first submitted this, suggested because of the cost, that we not have an external group do this, that it be internal.
Well, I thought we were trying to form some sort of police.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of what we, you know, an internal employee going from one year to the next is going to have a tendency to cover up any errors they may have made in a previous year. I don't even think, if we use an external agency, that it should be the same one twice.
So I think we got recommendations, best practice, from the finance specialist from Carl Vinson that spoke to us. And he recommended an internal with the-
Oversight committee.
Yeah, but that's just not how this reads. This reads like two different audits. But you intended it to be one, but it's actually two. Yes, somebody can do the internal, three qualified independent auditors for the fiscal, for the annual. But they wouldn't need independent auditors if they're an employee. That doesn't make sense. So we have to address it in two different types of audits. You have your internal audit department, who is your person who's internal. But then they can hire a third party for the annual.
They already, yes.
Or the internal, it's a third party.
But then now we get into the realm of when, come to procurement, you hire your buddy who's going to cover it up. Not that they can't have it as an employee, it's just a little less likely. Because there's no, there's not as much of a financial gain for an employee over an outside firm.
If I may give you maybe an example. The annual audit, I think almost, maybe you said, you have to have external auditors. That's just, that's there, that away. But if you're looking at the internal auditor, ADP, Mr. Bryce Newman's ADP, they do payroll. You can do payroll in-house, or you can do payroll externally. And so this is really what you're just saying, is do I want an internal person who has benefits from here? Or do you just want to go out and contract with someone to do your internal audit function? Which is-
Very much like we contract you.
Yes. You can have an internal general counsel, you can have an external general counsel. So that's really what you're looking at, is do you find that staffing the person and the assistant and all of that as a whole department is your ideal way? Or is it better to hire, and Augusta's done both. They used to use, I'm going to say it was, I'm not sure if you've got it here, but it was, Baird and Company was their external, an external internal auditor, which makes like no sense whatsoever. But they were a third party internal auditor. So you have that option, so you're really just looking at, and to Rex's idea, you always got to tell them, are they employees or do you solicit them? And if you do, if it's an employee, you go through HR, that's how we solicit someone. And if it's going to give you proposals to be like hired as an internal auditor as a firm, then you're going to go through procurement to get RFPs, RFPs.
Right. I think the other issue that had been brought up was the concern that if we choose to do the audit by an outside firm, then the commission as a whole can choose not to, to finance it, right? So the, one of the things that we had asked the gentleman from Carl Vinson is, how can we make sure that this will be funded going forward? And the only way to do that is to create the department. Because the department has to be funded.
Or enforce the charter.
And do what? Hire a lawyer? I don't have money to hire a lawyer to enforce the charter, you know what I mean? It would be upon the community to do that.
Well, you have the internal audit department. You have the audit oversight committee, which would actually direct the auditors at the beginning of their term, whatever that may be, and give- at the beginning of their term, whatever that may be, and give them insight where to begin and at what level. That's the intent of having the audit oversight committee to protect the audit, not that in Augusta government.
So it's an employee?
Yes.
It's an employee. Can I explain for the benefit of the two of you folks, what's driving this question? We had in the last charter, the requirement for an internal auditor. The 30-year-old charter has it in there. What happened was, you'll see that when you dig into this red book. Regardless, the, what happened was in 2023 budget cycle, they declined to fund it. So that effectively took care of your internal auditor. And that is why this body took the, not extreme is not the word, but proactive approach to make it its own freestanding department with an internal employee to conduct this. And that, that harkens back to it's expensive to employ CPA's. So if you go out house for everything, you're really, really taking some serious cash off the table. So the thought among people that everybody around here has either checked with people or asked these questions, and it does seem to be the consensus seems to rotate around having an internal auditor for garbage variety, day in and day out kind of things, keeping an eyeball on things, but that you would require an external auditor, A, for the required mandate, state mandated annual audit of the budgets, and then B, if you had other issues that you wanted audits done with and it is funded by the commission like we have currently going on in HCD and in the Clarkson Rec, that you would seek outside agencies with expertise to conduct those audits. So to bring this to a head, is there a consensus that the internal auditor should be an internal, an employee or a contracted with person? Is that the way to put the question?
Employee.
Well, I personally like to have a contractor, but I think it's just too easy. I can control an employee mindset or the same management.
With, and so one of the questions we've got on this list is how long the term? Because you would then, again, have to come up with a contract just like with your.
Contractor, call it a contract with the internal audit firm that's hired to do that job. And then there's a bid by the procurement department to secure those audits. And then the external audit, that's a function done by a different agency.
Different.
Together. That way we have a reason.
How's that sound? That's beneficial, is it sounds?
I'm an employee.
What's that?
I'm for an employee.
Tell me why.
So a contractor is not incentivized necessarily to do a good job. They still have contracts. I'm a contractor all the time. I just do the work. That doesn't mean the work is actually always, when you're not intimately involved with the work, the work is just simply the work versus an employee is typically going to be intimately involved with the work.
Well, which is with the oversight. Is that an opinion or have you found that to be a large part, true?
Yes, absolutely. I'm a software engineer. And when I tell you people that also software engineers, we take folks to the bank all the time. I'm just being honest about it. You have people, hold on, let me finish. You have folks who will charge somebody $600,000 for a project that costs them $25.
I'm a contractor and I'm concerned by stealing their work.
Not everybody is though.
So what's the point of the oversight committee then? Because they're going to, they're going to provide some, in my eyes, I look at it as man of control over what.
And that's the critical issue is that this is not an employee that reports to the city manager. This is an employee that's outside of that realm and they report exclusively to the audit oversight committee. And we need to talk about the structure of the audit oversight committee. But they are outside of that command and you don't want management having influence over that because they could influence, and there are a couple of other issues that we will raise in this space. But if you're going to design an internal audit function, it generally has an outside control body that, in this case, it could be, there generally are people from the governing body that are on that audit oversight committee. But then you also often have external experts, people with experience in finance and management, for example.
These people also.
Well, I was just going to say, so with the actual, if we did do an actual internal employee or we did an actual contracting, I thought that was also guidance here about an actual external agency kind of almost checking that information to ensure that they are doing their job correctly. And just to kind of go a little bit further, I even liked the idea about adding in the fact that we don't go with the same firm each time, the external agency that's checking the work of that person that we're on a system basis.
One of the other things is that the person that you're talking about hiring is going to be a minimum CPA. And they have certain guidelines under CPA as legal does that they follow in their profession. So even being a contractor, they still have to follow those guidelines as a CPA.
Right. And I'm aware of that. But the other piece is, is if we're RFPing this thing out, you cannot control how much that's going to cost the budget. You haven't actually, no you can't because you go with whatever is the lowest. And if the lowest is above your budget, then you're just not going to.
Well, that's a commission, but.
Right, but again.
They may elect to go with the highest.
They could, and that's fine, but the budget won't be able to control what that is versus an employee. You build in their fridge and everything. You can put a line up for that employee. A line up for the external firm?
My, my position for positions in that regard would be, I would want to find out what you wanted me to do and say yes to.
So are we?
That would be the committee. That's be the committee. They would take their direction from the committee.
So is, does this come down to cost? Or were you actually worried about the actual, there not being any misappropriation of funds? Which one are we trying to focus on? Because, you know, at the end of the day.
I think both of them play valuable because once you get down and see that it's going to be too costly, then you're going to have that bear. But you start out with an intent. There's always the intent to keep, you intend to do a good job, do a proper job. And I think an employee can do a proper job personally.
Because not all employees just say yes to.
So if it is an employee, who would that employee report to? And I mean, I know this.
Oh, so oversight, oversight. I think he explained that very well by saying you have three members and then you have two outside. And I think you rotate around, you get a difference every year. And I think it would be more efficient of a person.
So you're saying you're rotating the oversight.
Well, yeah, well, you are rotating out this, this internal audit.
You will be.
Yeah, if you got somebody on that external audit that you know from past or whatever.
No, 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 no. Not the folks doing the, not the internal auditor. You're saying the oversight committee.
Oh, yeah, rotating around.
You're rotating them as well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I like, I like the oversight committee. And I like the route that she has to stand with the internal audit, just to keep them, just to keep them clean and honest.
Yes.
Just to keep, but I personally would love to see an external audit done by an outside every two to three years.
We're supposed to do that every year.
I'm just saying, I don't know.
Yeah, we're supposed to do that every year.
So I think we.
But it's a different kind of audit. It's so high level as to not, to barely be of use. It's checks the box in a plan of that they keep it on file. It's not, it's not the kind of audit you'd like to see.
Well, then you can make the requirement, and I'm sure this is probably not charter language.
That's order.
That, right, that performance audit has to be at least that because just auditing the budget isn't enough. There has to be monitoring money spent appropriately. Because that's.
And that's actually, that is actually charter language in E. The items that are spelled out in lowercase a to E, highlight any of those issues. That's on page five, the following one.
Page five.
Five, a to e.
Those are the kinds of issues that the internal auditor would be addressing and according to.
Well, I think the goal of the internal auditor overall is to be proactive rather than reactive. So to catch an issue maybe while it's just beginning before it gets to be millions of dollars in, so I like, I like the internal auditor being an employee because one, as a separate department, they have to fund it. So there's, there's no get around from my understanding on that. If we go with an outside company, they would choose not to fund it. So then we, so then we essentially have no internal.
Two questions, each one for the answer to the question. Are you looking for an employee because it's a less expensive way to have an audit?
No, I think that's a benefit of having an employee, but the employee guarantees that it is done versus, I should say that it is funded. Because as of right now, the commission as a whole can choose not to fund an external auditor to do these audits.
If I'm a CPA, I, the only reason I would apply for that job is because I've been rejected by one of the higher firms.
Um, so.
I would say my classmates will need an internal auditor. We disagree.
You have CPAs that are specifically internal auditors and they're well aware what we're going to raise. Which is that to make you be paid?
Yeah, well, and then on top of that, and I'm so sorry, I can never remember his name, the wonderful gentleman.
John Holsey.
Holsey. When he came and spoke to us, I mean, he did talk about the things that, you know, the qualities that we would want to look for in an internal auditor. So obviously that, that exists and people want those jobs because otherwise there wouldn't be qualifications that are best practiced.
For instance, he could get a job somewhere else, but he wants to do public service. He's amazingly qualified. I think that's true of a lot of public service, but they choose to do public service.
Do I have to go to vice chairman Bryant and turn the clock?
Well, one of the things that I think we use the term CPA kind of randomly, like that's certified, but they are certified internal auditors. They are certified. And that's what your employee would be, a certified internal auditor. And their responsibility would be to handle any time internal audits that need to be done within your governmental structure. And I think like anyone with a certified degree, we have to assume that they are on a higher end ethically to do the right thing. We cannot base our decisions on our thesis. And that's just saying that as an internal auditor, they are doing the right thing. I happen to sleep every night with an internal auditor. I know.
Beautiful, too.
He am I.
I know over the years, based on the kind of jobs that she has had over the years, what kind of work goes into the internal audit. And my, even in my years of managing first, they have been highly professional. I just think that internal auditors should not report directly to the people that are evaluating it. So this oversight committee makes perfectly good sense for your checks and your balance. So if it's about recommending, and I was thinking as we did this, that it'll be an internal audit department all.
Chaos.
That is responsible. Then if something comes up to the degree that they need some assistance outside, they recommend then bringing in more additional.
Right.
So my, my vote would be to hire an internal audit in-house, but I think that makes sense for. That's just my plus.
And then there's the turning bucket.
Just a couple of observations here and you'll discuss. If you go to the external route, my understanding is audits historically, we have an auditor that here that could help us, but historically it was a three-year type of stint and maybe you could repeat one time so you could do it for six years. My understanding is that three years is maybe a little more antiquated and that it's closer to five years for this stint because it takes your auditor about a year to figure out, you know, and by the time they're up and it's going, they're open. So sometimes you may, but you may want to have a reasonable term and you may even want that to be within an ordinance kind of issue, but maybe to provide they will not be eligible for more terms than once. The other thing is, I understand y'all's idea of funding issues and do recognize that when we say an internal auditor, that's really an internal auditor department, which may or may be more than one auditor, this internal, which just will be a department head, so to speak. And the other part of it is, is that, maybe using the language, too much information. It's frequently difficult to find people that have the qualifications that will accept position and salaries that you're able to pay. So that's just something, you know, we can tell you, tell the company note that we're going to advertise $100,000 internal audit position and you may find that you get either no applicants or an applicant that you don't want. And so that's, while you could say that the commission cannot fund the department, the external person, putting parameters that are, we won't pay any more than $60,000 for an internal auditor, even to guarantee you won't, you won't have one either. So it's, it's, but, but the final observation of that is, there are always, there are always situations that we all always look back to, but generally the commission, all, you know, 11 of them do want to do the best for the community and they're not out there trying to screw over the community constantly. So I, I don't think you need to worry too much within reason they will fund the department, they would fund an external person if you needed to. But I just hearing y'all say three years, that may or may not be the best practices today. It may be. I just know in the big audit, I think they use a five-year term. And this, so we, I don't know if we're going to finish this today, but do kind of put those in parameters and, and maybe we can get some feedback on it. What's the best term of that for what that's worth?
I guess on that note, can we ask Carl Benson to provide some information about what the usual timeframe is for a term of audit?
Sure. And, you know, and later on, I do note that if you want to specify what the term of office for the internal auditor would be, and two, four, and six years are common. There's value in having a longer term so that it's not tied exclusively to a specific set of elected officials. So the controller general, who's the head auditor of the United States, has a six-year term, for example. And it's so that it spans over presidential terms to make sure that they can act independently is the idea. But we can get just more specifics on what some of the other communities have done in terms of.
And then I guess also too, in reference to the language, we had mentioned about the external, because I think we're still looking for an external agency to come in and don't check that internal auditors.
They were. Yeah. There's some language in there that you could have a peer review.
Yeah, the most common is professionally, there is an expectation of peer review.
Every so often.
But yeah, that you have a specific set of your audits that you have evaluated by peers to make sure that you are performing up to expected standards.
It's a requirement for the certification.
But I guess on that note, is if we are going to do that to have some type of language standard, we don't go with the same individual every time you do that, that peer review?
Yeah.
And I, I assume you would ask Mr. Holsey? Did I? Like even as far as the best practice for choosing the audit oversight committee or?
Yeah, so if you turn to page three, item four, it's the audit oversight committee. So GFOA and the local government finance auditors, or local government auditors association recommend that it should not include management personnel. And so the proposal that y'all had drafted included the finance officer and the city manager slash administrator. But those would be management positions. And so that clouds the role of that oversight committee. And so the recommendation that those organizations have. And so the recommendation that those organizations have is that it should be members of the governing body and external folks, members of the community, but you know, it could be a local CPA, it could be a local finance officer, somebody that has an understanding of financial issues. Those would be your external, your audit committee that would be reviewing the practices of the internal audit. And so for example, if you went in that direction, if you could have sub item under four C, the audit committee could consist of, let's say, five voting members, it could be more, but if it were five voting members, it could be the mayor, two commission members, and two at-large members. And the two at-large members would be residents of Augusta with expertise in auditing, preferably performance auditing, as well as financial auditing.
So but how would two members of the commission or commissioners be chosen?
So, we can spell that out, but, but like many assignments, that would likely be by the mayor pro tem, I would, I would guess.
Yep. Correct. Currently, the Augusta's Audit Pension and Audit Committee is inconsistent with your best practices, but partially it's the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the finance chair, so that's three members there, and then the administrator and finance director. That's, that's more to do with the pension than the audit upside. So if you're doing that, as to Ms. Beck is his question, the finance chair is obviously a commission member and that's by appointment and the mayor pro tem is elected by the body. So that could be status positions that people automatically go there. Or you could have the commission elect them, but that's, if you like status positions better, that's a pretty good mix there.
Is that best practice?
That would not be an uncommon practice, right? Yeah. It's not necessarily the best practice of which members of the commission to choose, but a common practice would be the person who's the finance chair, the chief, the head of the commission, the mayor in this case, and then the mayor pro tem. So those would be.
I think for our city, that's best practice was mayor pro tem. That's an amendment, got a whole body of the commission stuff.
Yeah, the link says we should be a part of the bodies. So.
You know, sitting in on the commission being, a lot of times you got folks wanting audits to be done. When I think of my commissioner, Ignite Rice, you know, she's wanted an audit, others are wanting an audit, but the audit is being blocked. And then a couple of years down the road, you got a state or a federal investigation. How do you prevent that? Can we prevent that blocking as a charter for you?
So, you can make it more difficult, yes. And some of that is by allowing the audit committee to make those decisions about, you know, so the auditor, the way it typically works is an auditor proposes to the audit committee what set of audits they want to look at, knowing that they can change that in the middle of the year if something comes up that's, you know, critical. But that auditor ultimately is in charge of that and they get support from the audit oversight committee in those decisions. And the key is you've got those external folks, you know, supporting that and they play a very critical role in that, to make it so that it's harder.
Take the politics out and be more objective.
Yeah.
The reason it happens now is because we don't have an internal audit.
That's right.
So to piggyback off of what Mr. Pearson is saying, if, if this committee consists of five people, can, let's say, one commissioner or three commissioners come together and say, okay, we think this audit needs to happen? Can they, is there a process for recommending or forcing the oversight committee to push that through? You know what I mean? Because otherwise the commission, without funding, like the commission would have no say as a whole into the internal audit.
So the commission at any time could recommend to the audit committee that they, and the more votes that they have, the more persuasive that they would be to the audit committee.
But at which point?
But there is not a formal mechanism that would force the auditor. But I understand if you're concerned there and we can look at that language a little more carefully too.
But Ms. Beck has, at the same time, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but to answer your question, if you have an internal auditor, they don't, the audit committee does not suggest to do this, with six votes, you can still hire an auditor to do what you, what they want to be done. See what I'm saying? You can still have the ability to hire, the commission still can hire professionals. It doesn't take that away, it's just a bit more, it's, you already have it built in and they have a mechanism of, we're going to audit these departments in kind of hopefully a little bit of a random area, but they're going to look at certain departments more frequently. You know, the law department has no money going through it, so you might look at it, but it's a different audit than someone who has, you know, finance or, you know, things like that. And to Mr. Pearson's question is that the difficulty with commissioners saying, we want an audit, is that that is a very defined scope. And we just recently, at the commission level, someone did something, they were auditing and the auditor basically said, we need to take a pause. What you're asking us to do, it's really not getting the answer that you wanted. Okay? And so then they had to change the scope for their services, which was positive and they're, so my, and we got into this exercise of, well, how do you define what the audit is? And no offense to the auditor in this room, but it's, unless you know the words to use, you know what you want, but it's hard to say that. The most recent, not recently, but people love the one of forensic audits. But they said, we need a forensic audit, they don't understand what that really means. And so to your question, the internal auditor will be there to function, but if they don't feel like they're getting that answer, the commission still has the ability with six votes to hire an auditor to audit whichever department they would like.
So my concern is we, we created this to avoid what Mr. Pearson was talking about happening. You know what I mean? Where there are consistent calls for an audit and they aren't happening because of the lack of six votes. So if there's only five people on this, and I'm not saying we need to put the whole commission on this oversight committee, because I'm not sure that would be a best either, but I'm just wondering if there is an alternative route for those commissioners that are, that are in a seat of authority, they're the governing body, to have a lesser, like can four of them say, yes, we come together and we agree, we need this, to where it's less than the six, especially since it's an internal auditor? Because if we always have to have the six and then we have to budget for extra money and then we have to do this and this and this, is the internal auditor gonna, is it gonna fix the thing we want fixed?
The internal audit fixes a lot of that off top because you're consistently doing audits versus just doing an annual.
But unless, so if I have an issue with parks and rec this year, but they just had one done last year, so they know that they're probably in the clear for another two years before they get audited again because it's going to be rotating and random, right?
So an internal auditor doesn't audit annually. They audit like monthly.
I actually thought the three-year plan was for the contract for the internal auditor, not how often they would do the audit.
Right.
Okay, so also.
But they're not going to deep dive into every single department every single month. It's not saying they're going to get to every department once a year.
What you would do, the intent of this was that you would start, the oversight committee would determine where the audits would be done first. And you start out at a performance audit, if they don't find anything in a certain amount of time, then move on. If they do find things, then that performance audit can change to a financial audit. And then that's when you actually, you must find now feasance or continued misrepresentation, could be a training issue or whatever, but then that's what you find in a performance audit. And then when you do find things that are, let's say, not following proper procedure, then you would go to a financial audit, which could be much deeper and much broader depending upon what they find.
Mr. Brown?
Certified internal auditor of that department know how to do their job. We don't have to define their job. They have the parameters and other outlines of what they need to do in a governmental structure. We or commissioners, they will know how to do their job and they will know where to go and how to go. Of course, if somebody comes up and thinks fishing, they can be directed to do something there, but they will be constantly doing things from an internal standpoint that meets their professional standards as internal auditors. And there will be checks and balances across the board on what's happening in the auditing process. And so it might be a thing where they send out quarterly notes and things, different departments and reports and all of that, but I don't think we can worry about the weeds as much as we about the overall conceptual idea of having a consistent internal audit process without another instruction. That's what the charter should do. Now how they function and what they do, I mean, up to that internal audit department with oversight from the internal audit committee where needed, but they will, they will know how to function. They will know what to do. They are professionally trained to do that.
Hey, Mr. Pearson, so.
I'm thinking about even if it's blocked, you know, if it's being blocked by the commission, six, six buddy votes and no audit, outside world going to be coming in, you know, saying, hey, y'all might be buddies, but we're not, we're not part of that buddy buddy program. We're going to mess with you, state or federal. I'm just trying to protect those who shouldn't be under, under this, this cloud and are constantly seeing people under this cloud and we say, well, he's too smart for that, or she's too smart for that, but those six buddies ain't doing nothing but being your friend and neighbors. And I don't, I don't like that. I'm just saying we need an audit. I don't like it.
So just to clarify, Coach Bryant, I'm not talking about the auditor being able to do their job.
That's right.
But if the auditor is being guided by the oversight committee and we know, we know politically things can shift from this side to this side and so things can be ignored if this side is in control and this department is, you know, falls under friends of this side. So I'm just trying to protect from either side having the ability to control what the auditor ultimately is going to be doing through the oversight committee. So if you are saying that they're going to be audited every year, I don't know if that's...
No, I didn't say that.
So the departments, how often are we looking at realistically? And I don't know if Mrs. Bryant wants to chime in because she does this.
No. What I mean.
So is, is, how often is it realistic to expect an audit to be done on each?
I don't think you can say you can do an audit on a department in a month or three months. It depends on what they find. It may be a very short period of time if they don't find anything initially and it could be a very long time depending upon if you, and I don't want, I don't want to really say what department, but if you get a lot of new grants and things, you get eighteen or twenty grants, you've gotten to audit every one of them, it's going to take you two, three, four weeks, a month to do everyone. Or maybe not all of them, but of the ones that are causing more smoke, if you will. And also, the other thing is, I think that if the credentials of the internal auditor would prevent them, their professionalism would prevent them from being driven by the audit oversight committee in a way that would, that would be, it would run against their credentials. I think the internal audit, internal someone trained as an internal auditor is going to have very high scruples, if you will, and if the internal audit committee says, I want you to go back over here because I don't like the way that department runs, but you have no reason for an audit now. There will be, they will go through every department, there are fifteen department heads. They're probably going to, and this is my thought process, that they're going to look at, again, the departments that money flows through first. And so I think we need to make sure that the people or the person or the group that does the internal audit has high moral character because that's what we're looking at. What we're trying to do, what my intention on this was to begin to rebuild the trust between the citizenry of Augusta and the local government, but right now we have none.
So my question, when I, when I was asking about the every twelve months versus, so if we had an idea, approximate idea of how long it would take to go through auditing, and I realize sometimes that's going to change because this one might take longer, then maybe it would take care of the concern that Mr. Pearson and I have, because then maybe this commissioner doesn't have to go and fight for an audit to be done if we know within a year and a half it will be done because that's the regular schedule.
So what it boils down to is the auditor will do their job. And we have to trust them to do their job. We can't get in the minutia of how they do their job.
But that's not the question. The question is the oversight committee guiding them on which ones that they're going to audit.
Only guide them to where to start and where they, not where they end up or how long it'll take.
Right, but the oversight committee doesn't dictate where they start, it's just guidance. That doesn't mean the internal auditor can't say, I think I need to start.
They, if you look at the document, it says that the final decision will rest with the auditor.
Exactly. So then that's, that's the all point, we need to know, let me progress.
One of the things I think is that professional internal audit department will provide, assume the department's state of the game, some guidelines about what their expectations are for their department. And they will, they will outline that. And as a manager of a department, you will have to submit to that internal audit certain updates and so forth and so on. And now if your department is receiving a lot of funding and stuff, they will be directing specifically for you certain areas to monitor and to look at. So again, I think the bottom line is, you know, you hire a internal auditor, he has an oversight committee, so they're not reporting directly to the people who are paying their checks and, you know, evaluating them. So that's what the oversight committee will do. Now if the commission or someone, and the reason we've had all these commissioners recently talking about forensic audits and everything, is that we haven't had an internal audit process in place. That will get rid of all of them. That will be done, you know? The mission is not going to be that busy where they'll turn and say, ask like the commission, Mr. External, Mr. External, internal auditor, come here, let us ask you some questions. And they'll be able to say, this is what we have from department A, B, and Z, and to our knowledge, it looks fine, okay? And if not, they'll say, there are some things we don't get into. So I think you hire a department, let them do their job and let, you know, we can't sit here and pick this and choose that. We got to let people do their job when you hire them. Now if they're not doing the job, you fire them.
That's right.
Let's see if we can kind of bring this to a core. How many here would agree with the sentence, the employee who was hired and fired by the commission and is outside of the regular management structure with an audit oversight committee?
Page first, page two.
Page two, very first paragraph, item B. We're going to try to get some consensus on where we're going so we can get all the relevant questions on the table. Then we will make provisions to bring this back next week to this session so we can continue. So item B, employee who was, which item?
Number one.
Page two, top of the page, very first paragraph, creation of an internal audit department. Creation of an internal audit department, core issue. Is this an employee, most common approach, who was hired and fired by the commission and is outside the regular management structure with an audit oversight committee? How many of us feel that is the way to go? Okay? Looks pretty well. Okay. So do we feel we have heard enough to put that portion of it in? I think when we do motions, we do better to put it in little chunks that all knit together to form a piece. So is that, was there enough consensus for us to put this on the main CRC agenda next Thursday? All right, so the next one is, I think we, this is more for Rex and Laurie's. Need instead of procurement, HR probably should provide three qualified blah blah.
Yeah, I think knowing your answer on one, we're fine on the language for...
Okay.
Yeah.
So funding, let's go to same page, about two-thirds of the way down, number two, item B. Funding of the internal audit function. Sufficient funds shall be proposed and approved to carry out the responsibilities specified herein. Is there consensus that that is a logical thing for us to embrace input in the territory?
So the question we have to answer here is who submits the budget?
Yeah. Okay.
And I think the oversight committee should...
I would agree with that. What is the rest of the body saying?
Your budgets be proposed by your administrator, correct?
Audit oversight.
Yeah, the audit budget would be a separate budget. You could think about it a little bit like the sheriff's budget.
But the sheriff's budget is within the budget.
Yes, it would basically be within the budget.
It would have to be, it needs to be within your, this would need to be within your budget for setting a mill rate.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but whether or not the administrator massages it, is it different? See what I'm saying? It needs to still be part of the budget for calculation purposes.
The idea is they submit this to be approved to go into their budget.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, so with that, I think there was broad agreement that it should be the audit oversight committee submitting that budget for the independent auditor?
Yes.
Can that go in the formal motion next week?
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna change the oversight, right?
Yep.
Yes. Then item C, take a look at the qualifications here and also taking into account what Mr. Plunkett had advised, that at least five years' experience in a contract that I think we need to go longer rather than shorter or we're going to wind up with subpar talent and a more common, I'm sorry.
The term is number seven, so hold off on the term, Marcy.
Okay.
My comment was if you were doing, hire a firm, on that term.
I see.
I mean, I'm not entirely sure you're gonna get someone taking the job that says after five years, you need to go somewhere else.
So Rex, I want to put on here a question for John Halsey. What is customary or a term for an independent?
I was gonna say that was six years, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he said they were gonna look into the internal audit.
And while you're at it, if he has any way of attaching for our benefit, what the price tag for that's gonna be? What would be a competitive salary for that?
We can give you some sense by looking at the audit functions of other consolidated governments.
Okay, great.
We should put a dollar amount.
Yeah.
Just so we know what we're up against. Go ahead, Chuck.
So I have a question for Mr. Palmer, for internal affairs. Person who is over that typically in your purview, how long have they, have you had someone stay in a role as a head investigator?
That varies. First of all, they report, they report that to the chief of police. That way there's no interference. They usually serve at the pleasure of the chief unless they get promoted or something of that sort. I've been internal affairs commander. That's a long position.
I imagine it's similar, it's gonna be similar for this.
So I'm really glad when I got promoted, got another assignment. But it just depends, if you're a good internal affairs investigator or commander, you're gonna hold on to that department. Are there rare people to find? If I could say one other thing, y'all were talking about the audit and I agree that we don't need to get in the minutia, but I'm pretty sure they do the same thing that certification and accreditation managers do.
Yes.
They take periodic samples. And that's how you find cover, now fees or whatever. Once you find something that's out of order, then that's the trigger that starts the investigation. So you can very well not audit the entire government every year by taking samples periodically. That'd be a sense of which department is going right. And then focus on them. That's just my experience.
Very good. Pull this group. Bottom of page two, item C. Professional proficiency, which of these is everyone okay with requiring for the internal auditor spot? A menu of these things and five years' experience.
So a question for internal audits and CPAs, is a master required for that?
Not necessary.
Okay.
So reread, reread from qualifications to the end of that. Tell me if that sounds like acceptable. Okay. About the others, are we okay to put this on the agenda next week in motion? Mr. Lewis?
No, no, I thought we voted.
Oh, okay. I'm okay with the two. How about around the table? All right. All right. I gotta thank you guys for doing this because I gotta, next week's agenda is due in like eighteen hours. Yeah, two more for that. All right, number four, I suspect we, we're discussing the audit oversight committee.
Yes, and we got some guidance on that.
Okay.
So we suggested the mayor, Mayor Protem and the chair of the finance committee, the speaker commission, and two outside citizens. That's what I heard.
That's what we said.
So replace the city manager with Mayor Protem.
Yeah. And not have the finance director or legal counsel.
So it's gonna be the mayor, the finance, the mayor. The finance committee.
Three commissioners, three commissioners and two public.
Well, the mayor, two commissioners.
But the city manager is not one of those.
No.
That is correct.
That was two outside votes selected by.
The governing body is what the link to says.
So let's drill into this just a little bit. You're saying the finance committee member of the commission?
Yes.
Okay. I think this is just Marcy, so you can reject this entirely without penalty. If you're gonna put the mayor and the mayor Protem on there and a third commissioner, don't you feel like we need to have somebody with a little more horsepower and broad-based knowledge than three commissioners?
That's what the two others.
Well, it would be the two, but boy, we're talking a billion three on a budget, folks. I feel like maybe the manager ought to factor into someplace in lieu of one of the members of the commission because that's the person holding all the cards.
But the manager is one of the...
Give it forward to the manager. Why do you want to give the keys to the chair?
No, I don't want to give the keys to the chair. What I want to do is to have somebody who's got the broad-based knowledge because you are not gonna have that with the chairman of the finance committee as a commissioner.
The person who has the broad-based knowledge is your internal auditor.
Is your, this is true, this is true. All right, so, all right, so who feels the mayor?
Finance. I try.
Okay, the mayor.
It's a conflict of measures with the city manager.
Okay, all right. So I think we're pretty much agreed on two outside professional CPAs, people that know how these numbers and audits and so forth work, serving as public people on that outside audit committee. All right, then we've got the mayor, the mayor Protem, and the finance committee. Who around this table supports that? Let's do a straw poll. Do we want more time to think about this? You gotta make it or not.
I understand. You just said the mayor, Mayor Protem, two outside people and you're gonna add the finance director.
Finance committee.
Finance committee.
Did you say the other ones had to be CPAs?
They have to be.
The reason why I'm asking you that is most firms will not allow CPAs to sit on this board.
Yeah, no, you simply want them to be people with expertise, is, and I don't mean preferably, but with some management and finance knowledge.
Yeah.
There's enough people in our community that you have more than capable, more than capable of handling this.
Yeah, sure.
It might be a CEO, ex-CEO of a company.
Yeah. All right, so those five, what is the poll of, who agrees with those five for the composition of the audit committee?
So Mayor Protem.
Two voting members, the mayor, two commission members.
And the internal auditor would be there, but he would be reporting to this body.
Who's at large in this scenario?
People with two citizens with the expertise.
And the mayor is at large, yeah.
Well, this one says two voting members, the mayor.
Oh, we tanked it.
Black voting members, the mayor, black commission members.
So it would be, it would be a total of five voting members. That would be the mayor, two commissioners, which would be the mayor Protem and the chair of the finance.
Okay, so maybe.
And then two at large.
Yeah, two and two.
So that language would change if you see the panel.
Yeah.
So I'd be yes.
What, can I get a sense of who supports that?
I think everybody supports that. I just got some questions. What would make the mayor Protem more qualified than some other commissioner that might be more qualified? That's my question.
Because it's not based on qualification.
The only reason why I said it because he was elected by the whole commission. And I think you got a better consensus from the whole body to have him on it. That's what I said.
Okay, thank you. I just, you know.
So leave Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I just want to get some certification and I think that's reasonable.
Could we write some flexibility into that, that if the body felt like they had somebody who was a stronger representative of this sector, that they had the option? Leave it alone? Okay. Don't worry, I'm just asking a question. So mayor Protem, chair of the finance committee, two at-large citizens with expertise. Who supports that? So we can put it on the back of the, not on a motion. All right.
The mayor's been a kicking team and stuff in the state. The snapper, after he snaps, he can't do anything else. Yeah, but listen, this is my point. The mayor Protem, the mayor Protem, he's there for whatever reason, selected by the body. But with this agreement of, you know, the mayor's of a certain color than the Protem's, so that comes in the way. He may not be qualified. So I'm like someone else, you know? Can he yield to another member, maybe more capable to deal with whatever the issue is?
I will put that in.
Can he yield? Because he's just there for, he's just a partner.
I'm praying that you still, the bodies, the culture, because we've had some there Protem, the idiots. We're trying to go that way.
Yeah, but that's my point though. But he was right colored though.
But I'm all right with Mr. Lewis' point. Chuck has said about sixty years of elected. I'm okay. I can live with it.
He should know, or he or she should know when they accept the role of mayor Protem was expected of them. If they don't want it, they get turned down.
Okay, focus on.
He says more pale.
Focus on number five. We're good. We're making good headway here. We got a couple things we're gonna ask for more information on, but we've got some solid motions here. So number five, the report shall be forwarded to the AOC and the commission prior to its release. Final release of any audit report will be approved by the AOC and the Augusta commission. Now, the secondary comment down here is that an audit report could be hidden. I think that may be problematic. So how do we?
So essentially, that was the language that came out of finance.
Okay.
We can essentially drop that and essentially say, all audits shall be made public.
Yes, we approve by the AOC and Augusta commission and made public.
So we drop the...
Well, that doesn't mean it be approved by AOC.
It just needs to be public.
Yeah, you don't want it to have to be approved because then if they don't like it, they'll hide, right?
Okay, but it says, well, title.
Sure, the only thing that I would bring up, and I'm just asking some questions, I don't know. If one of those audits do find something that might possibly be criminal, is that what the hidden was meant for? In other words, not publicize it until...
Suboper authorities. So there is separate language that says that there are some audits that are not to be made public because of those kinds of issues? But that's separate language from this. So that is addressed separately.
Okay.
I think when they're drafting, the plug-in language basically says that it'll be made available upon completion of any investigation. So in other words, if an internal audit team up and disclose something, the commission would be able to keep that in its body until it completes its investigation. It's not an internal dropping out of documents all the time. I think you would be exceptional to an open records request. So that's kind of what you're, you know, Mr. Coleman, what you're looking at is, if it says something, what should we do with it? And if it's over and done and not doing anything, then it should be publicly available.
Right.
But if it says you need to do more, you don't want to necessarily drop that out in string.
Right.
I just didn't want to put anything in it that might hinder some kind of investigation.
Open Records Act doesn't allow that. If it's an open investigation, you're not gonna do it.
Okay. So let's craft, let's capture all of the above.
I think.
Yeah, we've got enough to get new language back.
All right. I hate to ask you for this, but is it possible on the way home while you guys are driving to craft that language because I gotta have some sort of a placeholder?
Yeah, probably.
Literally tomorrow morning at night.
Well, you don't have to have the language. Yeah, you don't have it.
So we'll just speak to the topic and list that as, all right, we'll do a motion there. Okay, number six.
This simply wasn't addressed in the proposal, but giving the auditor the ability to hire additional staff as needed within budget range, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, so we'll say the internal auditor shall have the ability to hire staff as necessary within budget?
Is that necessary?
Well, you need to give them the power to hire because otherwise all power to hire is listed under the manager. Can we just stop right there with the first sentence?
Now, for legal reasons, you want all that. It's only one sentence. It's just one long sentence. It's just one sentence. He thought, can we stop with one sentence, but it's...
No, I see what he's saying is he just wants that first short sentence.
I think it's important because, you know, we all know people like to try to find gaps and stuff. So it makes it very clear as day.
To include both or to just stop with one sentence?
No.
It is one.
To include both?
Whole line.
You're creating some, some...
Let's turn our attention to Mr. Plunkett. He's gonna raise some information at the end of the floor.
This is a practical matter is that, you know, we have a... Just as a practical matter is that, you know, we have a, I want to speak to PM, deals with, y'all familiar with that, personal issues. When you have a director having the ability to hire without going through HR? You, you have a, we talked about nepotism issues, but this basically says nepotism is not an issue. It's one thing to say that you'd be able to hire another internal auditor, but I question if you need to be able to say that I can go hire whatever secretary I want. You see what I'm saying, say you, you're, by not having to go through the HR process, you potentially are creating some.
I agree that is that, I didn't understand.
Yeah, no, you still have to go through HR process.
I, I could also take that, I have the power to employ, period. I have the ability to employ, employs assistants necessary for this enterprise and tell them what the job duties is.
So we need to have some virtue standards?
I think Lori understands what I'm referring to, but she seems to be the draftsman of all the goods. But I, I just think we need to make sure that it says subject to HR policies or something like that. Just that you don't give a rogue person.
I want to hear your suggestions.
Yep. All right, are we okay to put that on?
Yes.
No. Number seven. Coach has got the floor.
One of the things I would say is that not necessarily the ability to hire, but the ability to recommend the hire. And then that approval would come from, from oversight from the HR and all that. So a lot of times, I don't know if you give the ability to hire staff as necessary within budget. And they have oversight, I think they can recommend that hiring. But I don't know, talk to them.
Every other department head is, is pretty much too late to hire?
If you have a city manager, you have to go through HR and the city manager to hire them.
So if I, so if I'm ahead of projects, and I'm just going with the project, and I hire a second chair, I want a second chair. I don't get to choose who my second chair is?
You do. What, what happens is, I mean, if I may, so you're gonna tell HR, one, you have to be already budgeted for that position.
Correct.
Okay, so you have the position of an H, of an administrative assistant. Then you would tell HR that you are wanting to employ that person. They will then go through a process of interviews and then take what the candidates are, then you can meet the candidate and do that. But it's, it's, but you're going through a process.
Right, and I don't, I didn't read this as circumventing the process so much as it gave the person the ability to pick their own department.
All right, let me, let me put it in a slightly different way. Then why is this necessary?
You know.
Okay, if you put it in there, it's there for a reason. So it's an exclusion from every other, it's, it's more than every other department head has listed.
The elected officials have more about it to the department, yes, who aren't elected officials, they have a process they have to go through, they have to advertise for the job.
Right, right.
And all that also, so it's kind of like two different lines.
So then it doesn't even end?
Well, it's one of the reasons why I suggested we have a contract instead of a pool.
I mean, that doesn't change that.
I think this is important though, for the person that's doing this actual, this internal auditing, that, you know, they know what the parameters that they need and wanted to make sure they run. And be able to provide the services they need to the, to the city. So I think it's important for them to have it, to be able to have that ability to hire.
Right, so maybe clear, we can just write something in there that it's the same as all the other departments except it's to HR.
Yeah.
Where we can find some language.
No.
Glad to be of service to you.
Nobody heard you first. Down here, we're.
All right, what should be the term of office for the internal auditor in years?
So we're gonna get you some more information on that.
I was looking at that, but I think the general rule was five, but we're gonna look more closely into that.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and put it in the form of a motion.
I can confirm, but Lori, I noticed that it's five years and then they can be renewed. So all the departments, the administrator typically has a, has a contract. And I believe that the airport director has a contract and the chief praiser has a contract. The chief praiser, one time, they were gonna do three years and then not have contractual terms after that. So what the, most of what we've done contracts for is recruitment. That I leave the place, I come here, we don't get work out, and you can terminate me six months after I'm here. That's what the contract's been there for. You certainly could have them under contract, but Augusta does not do many contracts. You know, all the department heads typically are not under contract there. So just to give you an idea, that's a little bit different. You may want that protection, but whether or not that renews every, not renews, but if you're appointed every five years, or does it go five years and now you're on an ad will? It's kind of the question.
I wonder if the contract would have a buyout clause?
Those are called lawsuits.
I'll go ahead and put it in the form of a motion for discussion next.
Yes, put it on.
All right. Number eight. This flies in the face of what we just said on some other things, but most common about the, although I understand independent auditor.
I thought we could settle that a long time ago.
Yeah.
Is this the oversight committee, I know we said commission here, is that the one they're reporting to?
It would actually be the commission.
Commission, okay.
I think consistency is a number called six.
Well, but number eight refers to removal of the independent auditor, is that what you're saying? The two thirds of, yeah. Okay, so two thirds, because I guarantee you that they're gonna hack a lot of people off, six if we want consistency. Let's talk about this.
Y'all weren't going to vote for seven for a city manager, there is no sense in us voting seven for this. If it's six, lead at six.
Six.
Go for it.
Same result.
Seven?
I don't know, we got two million of them.
Are we done here? Okay, Frank, Barrett?
Yeah, I mean.
Frank, what'd you think? Frank, don't.
You know how I feel about it, seven.
Okay. All right. All right. Yeah, that's good, we can put that on as a motion to vote it up or down? All right, issuance of an audit department, how quickly should a department respond to an audit report? General practice is minimum of thirty days to respond. Although sixty days is not uncommon, beyond sixty days are concerning, that often trigger additional oversight.
Shoot. I was gonna say, I don't know if this needed to, if they found something that was concerning, that would trigger them to respond quicker, but I don't know if that makes a difference here or not.
Does this need to be in your charter, the response terms?
No.
Not necessarily. We can clearly decide to not have it there.
Depending on what was found, it could make a lot of difference on.
Sixty days.
Yeah, this isn't.
If we discovered how bad an house is that it passed, if you wanna give sixty days.
I just think that's. I'll be telling your administrator immediately.
I think the language, you saying that, not leaving it in there?
Yeah, we can drop it.
I'm thinking the language should be in there.
Not the sixty days.
Yeah, not sixty, I think we should have something to trigger.
I mean.
I think the language should be in there to trigger some type of investigation.
This does answer the court, gives you thirty days to answer to a function. Okay.
Can we put it in there for thirty days?
Yeah, I think.
So I'm, I'm a little foggy all the time, but on this specifically. So if we have an audit, an internal audit, and we find problems, maybe missing money or missing people or whatever that could be, we're gonna give them thirty days?
No, so i- if it's missing money, that then triggers.
It's a sheriff's office.
Actually, you better have your duck in the hole.
Yeah, but this is, and again, if, maybe if you wanna have this not included, so the internal auditor could have more pressure to say, on this issue, I need to, you know, hear you respond with ten days or five days or.
No more than thirty days.
Or within an hour.
I think that's better.
I'm gonna say no more than ten days.
Yeah, I mean, some type of language.
It doesn't respond to?
They're not.
Are they responding to the?
To the audit report.
Actually, the department head now has to respond.
Yes.
The department head is under the manager, so theoretically, indirectly, the manager's responding to that.
Yes.
Is the manager now responding to the committee? Are they responding to the commission?
They're responding to the committee.
Okay, so.
But it would be public at this point.
Two people who are not employed by the county are now getting involved into your investigations, correct?
Well, they're just aware of it, but then the action would have to occur by the commission.
Well, I, I guess the question's response is, to me, I'm, I'm just thinking of the audits, we know, everybody knows there's a couple going on. And if there's findings, the commission would be the people who would be saying, this is, this is actually what you want you to do. They're not really, the response is not exactly like, here's the audit response, it's more like, get in this room and we're gonna talk about what your problem is and do it.
So we leave that to the commission, so.
I, I just, you can do it however you want to, I'm not trying, I mean, my job is to give you advice and make observations, that's how I see my role. And I just want you to tell, when Carl Benson goes away and this document is sitting here, and someone says, there's an audit and there's an issue. And should I still be serving this capacity, they're gonna say, did it respond to? And I'm gonna go, I asked them to tell me.
That's right.
I think it should be the committee, because then the committee can make, yes, the oversight committee, then they can make recommendations to the, to the commission of what should happen. Your mayor and mayor pro temp are right there. So they can make recommendations, cause it could be, you know, we, we have these findings, you have, the, the auditor may have given that department ten days to respond, and they respond, oh, it was a mistyping of something. They could just present that to the committee and it's a wash. It's not.
I'm happy for us to look into this a little more, to give you a little more.
It, it's gonna be, it's monkey about what's, it's, it's what actually, paper is one thing, really what's gonna happen. And I'm troubled with the idea that you're starting to get your investigations and confidentiality issues with two non-employees. But that's a concern.
So you're gonna bring language to us in John Holsey's opinion on how that should be handled?
I agree with Tony Parker, my experience in talking about internal affairs, although we had them sign a document that they would discuss whether they were focused on the investigation or if the information got out. So I agree with you one hundred percent, if you have outside individuals, it could be anyone on the committee, commission, and make sure that information is out of the program.
So is it the internal auditor you think should report directly to the commission?
I think so, yeah, I, I just don't like that we have two citizens privy to that information so early on in the investigation.
My, my idea, I think that's, is following the issues of audit report, a department has thirty days to.
Up to.
Or up to. I think that counts. If the audit report came up, because the audit report could very well be very up, could be a positive, not necessarily negative. But that department has thirty days to respond to whatever accusation or whatever comes out of their audit report.
Did they report that back to the audit, right?
Thirty days gives me time to get my passport and order.
Well, that's why it's up to, because you can put in language to say, based on the internal auditor's recommendation. Cause they could just find it, cause it could be an issue of, it's a typographical error and they know it is. Thirty days to figure it out and make sure the numbers, not the numbers gel, but make sure the error is corrected, could be that response. If it's malfeasance, no, you don't wanna give them a time of time. So that's why it should be up to thirty days based on the internal auditor's recommendations from the findings.
Are we, I'm sorry, Rex, are we assuming that the audit report, this is a negative audit report?
Not, not necessarily, I mean, but audit reports have findings and findings have to be responded to.
Right.
I just raised the question, did we wanna put a timeframe in there, depending if there was some bad feedback, and then that's how we got to here now?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that if we give the issue of an audit report, a department has to respond to that audit report, no matter what that audit report says. You know, cause you might say, oh, they got an audit report, and it's three or four months later, and I haven't even responded to a positive audit report. But that makes me, as a department head, I've got an audit report, I got thirty days to respond to this audit report. I accept the five of audit report. I am working on the recommendations of the audit report to get my department better in line than what it is. Cause I look at audit reports, kinda like any kind of audit, they have, they have what they have on audits, like, like findings or recommendations for things for you to do, you know? Any kind of audit can function, not only an internal audit, but an external audit function. Well, say these were the findings, and these are the recommending, recommendations of the findings.
And I would assume the internal auditor would also, that the oversight committee, you know, immediately, if there's certain things that they need to take to be actionable, so.
If I may continue on the thing, the audit report is being provided essentially to the commission. It's gonna be provided to the commission as well. And I understand the idea that you go back to the audit committee, but I'll, this is, again, y'all decide however you think is best, but I do point out that all of y'all were appointed by a commissioner. And if those commissioners don't have a seat at the table to talk about what the findings and reports are, and it just goes to an audit committee? You're probably gonna find that they're very troubled with this, taking out of their, you know, out of their, I mean, it's, ultimately, it's the commission's obligation to manage the county. And if there's a finding that needs to be addressed, positive or negative, they need to know about their department's behavior. And then if that department head is going to provide follow-up, it needs to be, in my opinion, it should be going back to the person who's responsible for the county. Not to a subgroup of three commissioners and two citizens. Just, it's not that that's a wrong way to do it, I'm just giving you some thoughts from a little bit of involvement, more deeply than I wanted to. With some of these folks, but they're gonna get really upset that you are taking their duties away from them. You know, you're taking duties away as a manager, and you say, I don't have, I don't have the right to understand what's happening, you know, after the findings are done and after this, I make next. You need to be very careful about how that gets integrated.
I, I agree with Lori Parker. I think that makes a lot of sense to make sure it get better for commissioners. And for Mr. Gaines' point into your part, Mr. Palmer. We probably do need to have those two at-large members sworn in, some kind of way to protect ourselves, so they won't have so much leaking.
Doing the NDA?
Yes, some, something to protect ourselves.
So I think we should update the language to say that they have up to thirty days to reply to their commissioner of their department and the internal auditor. The internal auditor, and this doesn't need to go in language, but the internal auditor can report back to. can report back to the committee as needed on that piece. But their least the answer is going to the commissioner that's in charge of their department. And the internal auditor.
That's my fault. I don't think there's a commissioner in charge of the department.
Well, I mean, like, with an apartment pause in their purview, like finance has certain departments that fall within their purview, administrative services has certain departments that fall within their purview. That's what I mean.
What we're going to accomplish is that they all need to catch the loop. Get them on. I agree with that. They're being left out purposely, not given the information that somebody else was aware of. Following the issues of an audit report, a department has up to 30 days to respond. And then internal audit, internal audit should report the departmental response to the commission, oversight committee, whoever.
Perfect.
You get it, Rick?
You can do that. I don't write it down. Following the issuance of an audit.
You got the first paragraph.
Department has up to 30 days to reply. The response will then be reported to the commission by the internal auditor.
In what amount of time?
Up to 30 days. Well, they have up to 30 days to reply.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're saying the department.
Yes.
And internal auditor will report the departmental response to the commission and whatever, to the commission, to the oversight committee, to whoever else you want to. But that would be, that's my tip, Rex, is capture that.
Right. Immediately.
Yeah. I mean, that's how it gathers info, I mean. And I was trying to capture everybody's input, because I think it's all the input.
Okay, hang on. Ladies, can we, we direct this to Macy, Lena, and Annabelle then about adding in the non-disclosure and the sworn in?
We'll have to look at the non-disclosure issue, because there may be some issues with that.
I don't need to keep the man in the DA.
But it has to be sworn in.
Yeah, I mean, they're under oath anyway.
Right. Because swearing in, you can't man the DA because for you, Trump's all for that.
Well, but if it's a personnel matter, it's an automatic MDA because you're.
Once you're sworn in, you fall out of the trust.
Right. Swearing in handles that.
Yeah. Once you're swearing out.
But in communication.
Do you agree with that?
It's important.
I think the question is, what is the purpose of your oversight committee? And is that to manage that employee and to work on the schedule of what's going to audit, who's going to be audited? I think the question is the purpose of the findings of that audit. The internal audit system's nothing bad, no big deal. But if they find something, it would seem to me that you would not be wanting to give it to people outside of your agency, and that's why it would go to your commission. But the oversight is to just make sure they're kind of doing the job, you know, it's.
The question was the inclusion of the MDA for the two people.
I have a. You can keep certain tax information confidential. And I know in the development arena, there's certain issues that you can keep confidential. I would, if you engage the person, such as an accountant, I think you can keep, they can have some obligations of confidentiality.
But what I was just talking about.
We hate MDA's in governments.
Look at it at the ethics board. No one on the ethics board signs an MDA. It's not a real issue.
Exactly. I would just say, swaying in, and I think that'd cover it, if you just be sworn in.
There's some committees and other things that have been highly confidential. You sign a, I don't know, you sign that you understand confidentiality and blah, blah, blah.
And that you, you might do an acknowledgement of the confidentiality.
Yeah.
That's what don't normally happen. And then you sign your name, so if you break.
All right. Folks, because we're kind of getting long in the day, let's do this. If this meets with everybody's approval, let's finish up page four, five, and six.
Well, there's nothing on four, five, and six. Those are the original proposals.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. So that concludes all of the internal auditor issues. We can now bring those back together with the rest of the language. And we will soon to have that ready for next year.
How about, Ms. Robinson, let me ask an opinion on something here. We were going to go through, it's not on this nice little list, but we were going to go through the final language for the ethics.
So I don't have much to add that I think folks will want to talk about right now, to be honest.
Well, so why don't you add what you are, does everybody have your copies of what was passed out today with the ethics?
So I'll add in some of the alternative language and some of the other pieces, and then I'll just send it out to everybody to review the email. Our issue is much shorter than what we, well, not much. It's still short, but I'm trying. And we can go through this, we get emails, and we can both.
Get our questions, because what I'd like to do is put that on next Thursday's. All right. Now, as for the rest of these, can we assign homework? How about I go home and I get you page numbers to look at? These are the questions. We haven't had time to discuss them. I am happy to move into next Thursday's session. That's fine.
Will you give us section numbers? I think the page is formatted to the screen time, so the page numbers might not be helpful.
Yeah.
You will get the sections to look at.
All right. So these are just simple questions, and there appears to be nine of them. If everybody can take, I know you guys are absolutely sick to death of messing with this stuff, but this helps Carl Benson. If we would, I will take it, I've got a couple of things that I will do with homework and circulate so everybody's right up to speed with where we are. If you would do your homework on administrative affairs, elections and removal and general provisions, that puts us potentially in position to consider working session questions, kind of like we did it on today's agenda. I've got to have that into Lena, and I think what we would have to do as a body is adopt it as an addendum since we are, what I have until, you know, early next week. It's a one-off kind of problem.
I mean, if we have this information already and we're already reviewing it, I say go ahead and put it on the agenda, and if we're not ready to discuss it, then.
We can strike it.
Ask one question. What is it about special elections and vacancies that we need to look at?
We just need to reread it to say we approve what is currently practiced or raise the issue on something that is not right according to you. I suspect you're going to come back and say, touch it, it's not broken, but that's.
It's broken. It's very broken.
Well, so read it first and then circulate questions. I think that's the way to go with these things. And if it's too much for one week, will they count?
And also, I would advise to read what is not just GMA, but read what's currently in the charter.
Yes, in our charter, the red book.
Yeah. Because some special election and vacancy stuff is safe.
Right.
Because you might, you know, as long as it doesn't conflict with state law, you might like something that's in your mind now that you do in GMA. I mean, I certainly think that we have drafted here, GMA might be a guideline, but we draft this.
Yeah.
I would like to take this opportunity and really tell the committee, I'm going to appreciate the work that you've done over the last couple of, last six weeks. We made a lot of progress and we can actually see the light in a tunnel. And I would like to thank Carl Benson for your assistance. The other thing is that once this is done, Carl Benson, it's not going to happen overnight. We got two and a half, three months of work to get this report done. And it's not going to just be, you know, a couple of weeks and it's done. It's about a three-month process to get it all done. So I am hopeful, I don't know what you've done, but I am hopeful through our meeting through the rest of November and December, we're there. And you know, it might be a little tweak in here and there, but we there enough for Carl Benson to provide us the report. And of course, as we get the report, we're going to review it and do all we need to do. But we are close, guys.
We are, Mary, we are, Ms. Robinson, and Mr. Punkt would like to add
the ruling on this ethics section is that there's some language about penalties, and we're doing some research in the law department. We'll have this back before this next meeting, which is quicker than I realized. But I don't believe those penalties are going to benefit them all. I think the renewable issues will be subject to state law, not that provision. So just heads up and give you a little tweak on it. Congratulations.
I also want to add that, and a lot of the things that we discuss as a body, even though sometimes it feels like we're at each other like this, if you look at most of the stuff, most agree. And I think we have to keep that process in mind, that we're not against each other. There's no these people against that, no, it's not any of that. It's literally how you feel. And for the most part, we've all been able to provide information to, here's my understanding, or well, here is my understanding. Oh, okay. Well, how do we meet in the middle? And I appreciate that we've been able to do that, and I want us to keep that in the forefront of what we're doing so that we don't have this. Most of the stuff we all got with, we're all thinking the same thing. So there's no need for us to fight that.
All right. No being further business transact this week. Thank you for your service.